Meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices and/or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes, will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentation to the board is limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda items or matters on which the board customarily take action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The process applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Ms. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4. Ms. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Ms. Rose Cohen, Director of Equity Assurance, will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening. Ms. Cohen.
I have chosen to use The Giving Tree today for my inspiration. A very, very meaningful book to me, and I guess the majority of you are familiar with the story. It's a 50-year-plus-old book that addresses a relationship between a boy and a tree. Of course, it carries many object lessons. A lesson of one's wrong behavior and another's right behavior. A lesson of selfless love. A lesson that would have us thinking of fairness, justice, and equality. A lesson of making sacrifices. A lesson of generosity. Some have even had heated debates, saying that the book was about the story of God and humankind. Some have had other debating stories, that the book was about Mother Nature and society. Some even say it's about the relationship of a mother and child. But for me, the book, the book's title lures me. It's The Giving Tree. So I opened the book, and I'll read one page. And if you have not read this book, I strongly suggest that it becomes a serious part of your library at home. And so the boy cut off her branches and carried them away to build his house. The Giving Tree, that's what we do as stakeholders in this educational system, whether teacher, support staff, administrator, we give, and give, and keep on giving. Then we give more, because that's who we are. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would also like to take a minute, as a member of the Ocala Racial Task Force, I would also like to take this opportunity to tell you about some upcoming events, celebrating One Ocala, One America once again. And I'm not sure how many of you are on board with this, but this is an annual event, and if I'm not mistaken, this is our 13th year. The Racial Harmony Task Force is comprised of citizens from all spectrums of businesses here in Marion County, and openly invites new and additional members to join, join the group. They make powerful decisions, they are a part of Ocala. We are Ocala, One Ocala, One America. The group meets every third Wednesday at the Ocala Police Department's Community Center at 10 o'clock. The meetings are usually about an hour and 15 minutes. So if at any point in time you believe you have something to contribute to that group, please join us. I'd like to tell you about some of the upcoming events, starting on Wednesday, October the 5th. We will have a variety show, supporting diversity, One Ocala, One America. For those of you who've never had the opportunity to visit the Riley Center, this will be your opportunity to come out and see some of our local talent, musicians, dancers, stage extras, extra ganzas going on. And the theme is all centered around racial harmony. Many of our children will be participating. That's on Wednesday evening at the Riley Center, starting at 6:00 PM from 6:08. There is no fee. Thursday, we have what we call the KIDS event going on. KIDS is an acronym which stands for Kids Involved in Diversity Social. That will take place at the Ed Kroski Center. That's always an awesome event each year, just enticing and bringing out hundreds and hundreds of children from all over. That event will start at 6:00 PM at the Ed Kroski Center. That's right across from Madison Street School, 1510 Northwest 4th Street. Please get your children involved in that. And then Friday, of course, we'll have a great movie depicting diversity down at Citizen Circle called My Big Fat Greek Wedding. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to take advantage of some of the movies that they show on the circle, but the city, which I'm very grateful, spent a lot of money on getting the rights to show some of these movies, so let's take advantage of some of the things that our city is offering us. Free popcorn and drinks will be served, bring your chair, and hopefully we won't have any rain. And then, of course, Saturday, most of you are probably most familiar with that event, the cultural festival that's going to be down at Citizen Circle. We used to have it on the square, it's moved at Citizen Circle. And if you had the privilege of attending last year, you would probably agree that it was an awesome event, with all kinds of dancers, locals as well as others. We'll have a number of food vendors, all in the name of building cultural oneness here in Marion County. And with everything else that's been taking place in our country, in our nation, some close by and some far away, let us all get on one mind and one accord, and jump on board, and just enjoy that week of celebration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cohen, I have, I have a request. Is there a way you can give us a hard copy or email us the information that you gave about all of the different events? I'm very much interested in attending some of them, okay?
I certainly will.
Okay, thank you. That was a lot of information you gave.
And of course, you can, if you want, you can Google, excuse me, you can Google One Ocala, One America, and you can bring up that schedule as well, but I'll still send it to you.
Let's give them a round of applause, because this is a... Don't run off yet, Rose, I haven't finished my little spill. You know, Mary Sue Rich has been around, around Ocala all of her life, and I know she was one of the originators of this.
She was the founder of this.
And one of the things I'd like to say to all out there, this is one of, this is one of the most important things that we could do at this point in our nation's history, is that we come together, and this would be an excellent opportunity. So I look forward to seeing our board members participating and going out and really just being a part of it. So thanks, Sarah, thank Mary Sue, thank the city, and again, this is some things that we can agree on. Thank you.
And one more thing, Mr. Chair, I did mention that the major kickoff, which is the Unity Breakfast, because that's one of those invitation-only, and I hope folks in the background have done their due diligence in notifying all of you concerning that Unity Breakfast. But even if they haven't, you are welcome. That's Tuesday at the Hilton, starting at 8:00 AM.
Is coming Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman and Board, with the exception of item 16.1, which has been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 27th, 2016 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
It's a move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Maybe you can...
Okay.
We're almost there.
Okay, we're waiting on, I forgot to introduce Ann, she's, she's an able substitute for Brenda.
Um, it is...
Board, you'll be Heather, no, you did pass it 5-0, it was unanimous.
Okay, board, the motion passed 5-0. Okay, Ann, we'll move on then.
Oh, you know what, I think I had to do that. Hold on. There.
Okay, the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 6th, 2016 special school board meet, board meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
It's a move.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Judy Sinetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, has two special recognitions this
Good evening, Chairman James, Superintendent Tomlin, and board members. As always, it's a privilege to be with you and in front of you. We do have two recognitions we're going to do this evening, and I'm going to first start by calling Kevin McDonald to the podium with me. And I'm sure that Kevin is not a stranger to any of you, and we are here to recognize Kevin and Allstate Insurance for a grant that the Public Education Foundation received. Kevin was kind enough to forward me an application and allowed me to apply for a $1,000 grant to support Engage in Education. But more than that financial contribution, I want to recognize Kevin for all of the support that he's given to the Marion County Public Education Foundation and to Marion County Public Schools. When Mr. Tomlin and I first met to discuss engage in education and this great community component, the third person that came in on that conversation was Kevin. And he came willingly, and he was with us at every leadership team meeting. He has been with us since the very beginning. I hope that you have seen his picture on our billboards, because he is Marion. He is a graduate of Forest High School, what year was that?
83.
1983, graduate of Forest High School, and his children have also been through Marion County Public Schools. So Kevin is one of those leaders that we want to recognize for being Marion, for being one of our graduates, for coming back to our community, for being a business leader, for being a philanthropist, and for being truly engaged. And Kevin, for everything that you do, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Ann, would you like to say a few words?
Just to congratulate you guys on the work of the Engage Initiative, and from an economic development standpoint, the community that understands the workforce equation wins, and the reality of the work that's kind of, has been laid as a foundation through the Engage Initiative, I believe we've, we've definitely made progress. We got a lot of work to do, but the reality is that if we can transition, you know, our students through, you know, their educational process and into the workforce here in Marion County, it's going to bless us all. So thank you for allowing this to go on, and great leadership through your foundation.
Thank you again, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say, if, if, if any of you are, like the Public Education Foundation web, web, Facebook page, I'm sorry, you will see that each Monday, we do I Am Marion Monday, and last week, we had 46 photographs of employees of Forest High School that were graduates. And they actually were a few that weren't able to be photographed, they had 53 on their faculty and staff that are employees of Marion County Public Schools. So it truly is great to see those folks that we've homegrown and are back in our community continuing to make a difference. Thanks, Kevin.
Judy, before Kevin get out...
Kevin, Mr. James wants to talk to you.
Before he get out of there, guys, I just want you to know, I remember Kevin in his youth.
He's still young, Mr. James. He is Coach James to me, and will always be.
You know, if he's in the 80s, 83, I remember him in his youth, and I often remind their kids that if they really want to know the real story about him, give me a call.
Some things, some things we just keep to ourselves.
Right. I know that Kevin had been in the community for a long time, he's worked with the Economic Development, part of, portion of our program, and I just want to commend him for being a part of our community, and really, one of the kids that we got to stay in Marion County. And I just want to say thanks on behalf of all the people that you impacted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we continue.
I would now like to call up to the podium from Duke Energy, Ms. Dorothy Purnau. And Dorothy, just recently, in the last couple of months, had Marion County added to part of her region or her area with Duke Energy. She wasted no time in jumping on board, reaching out, and making herself a part of what we do here in Marion County. And I'm, I would like to recognize Duke Energy for supporting the Public Education Foundation in many ways. First, if you don't know, and you may not know, that one of our Board of Directors is a Duke Energy employee, Ms. Shelley Ross, who is a CPA at Duke, yes, we've got lots of CPAs on our board, and Shelley is also our Audit Chair on our Foundation Board. Last year, Duke Energy was the golden sponsor for our Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Gala, but we are here tonight to recognize Duke Energy for a $20,000 grant that I wrote with the help of these beautiful ladies behind me, we'll introduce those, them in a minute, and that $20,000 is supporting STEM initiatives at three of our local elementary schools. We're going to pilot it at those schools this year, and then hopefully we'll be moving it out. But those students at Emerald Shores Elementary, at Maplewood Elementary, and Legacy Elementary are going to all become Duke Energy STEM Stars. So let me bring up our principals, please. We have, from Emerald Shores Elementary, Ms. Stacy Houston, you may have seen Ms. Stacy on a hashtag I Am Marion billboard as well, Dawn Prespatino from Legacy Elementary, and Laura Burgess from Maplewood. Laura, would you like to talk a little bit about the program?
Well, I was in Engage, in Engage in Education meeting, and Ms. Sinetti came over and said, "Pst, can you come here a minute? I have an idea." And from that point, she and I worked together to come up with a program where we could reach as many of our students as possible. And so I grabbed two of my cohorts and people who I work with all the time, and very like-minded in education, and so the three of us are going to take this on, and we are just so grateful. Thank you so much.
Dorothy?
Thank you very much. I'm really thrilled to be part of the Marion County community. I actually, I've lived in Citrus County for over about 30 years now, and I come into Marion quite a lot, but in the few months that I've been here, I've just found a real warm and open and welcome family, and the depth and the breadth of what you do in this community is pretty remarkable, and how many engaged citizens you have. So I'm actually thinking about relocating. And, I should, I should, I know, I should. You know, so I am, it's a privilege, and I know that all of you probably know Amy Mangan, and she is a product of Marion County School System. She was born and raised here, and she recently got a promotion, and that is, it's a good thing for her, and it's a good thing for her family and for our company, but it was also, you know, a great opportunity for me to be able to come and be part of the Marion community, so, but Amy does send her regards, and I know you've probably seen her face here several years in a row, and, but I'm now the new face, but don't forget Amy, because I know she's hard to forget. Duke Energy is really, really proud to be able to provide this grant for $20,000. Throughout the state of Florida, we have provided about a million, over a million dollars in grants for education to 33 different school districts in this last year. And when you work with education foundations like the Marion County one, you get that matching grant opportunity, and so you get, you know, double the opportunity to really spread the message of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And I'm just thrilled that these principals have stepped up to the plate, and they want to introduce the Duke kits, the Duke Star Kits, into the classrooms and teach STEM programs, and now I'd like to take the opportunity to present the big check.
Can I ask Superintendent Tomlin and Chairman James to come down for our photo op? And Mr. Christian, if you'd pose everyone, if you'd like, ladies, ladies who'd like you.
That's exciting.
I wonder whether I can say this now. Amy, I'm quite...
Oh, man.
Can I be one of the ones that Dunnell High School had the boys and girls club?
Okay, sir.
Why don't you, uh, here? No, no, you just be in the middle of the...
Everybody's looking this way, one, two, Mr. James, there we go. One more? Great job, thank you.
Thank you. Judy, for you? Oh, thank you. We'll put this in our boardroom.
Have fun, nice meeting you.
And Ms. Purnau will be inviting you out to the elementary schools as soon as they are up and running with their Duke Energy STEM Star Kits. So thank you. And thank you again, board members, for allowing me to come and introduce you to some of the people that make our community a great place to live and work and educate our kids.
I just want to just say, where you can hear it publicly, we'd like to thank Duke Energy for really being a part of what we do, and I know they've worked extremely well with our vocational program out at Dunnell. And I know that they worked tremendously and did a lot of things for us when we were trying to do some things for kid, kids in the afternoon. So when you see Amy, tell her, "I appreciate it, I appreciate it."
It's our, it's our pleasure to support you.
Okay, and I hope that's in your notes, what she did.
I don't know, I don't know, right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
I will now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. James, good evening, everyone. In compliance with Florida Sunshine Law, the school board has adopted some uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter that does relate to school district operations. The school board has adopted these procedures to ensure that all members of the public have a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. As Chairman James told you earlier, public speaker forms are also located on the table. The completed forms were due to the school board's assistant no later than 5:40 PM. After I finish my comments, Chairman James will call tonight's speakers in the order receipt of forms by the school board's assistant. For tonight's speakers, before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have a full five minutes. When a speaker has one minute remaining, he or she will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. And as a general reminder, speakers and all meeting attendees must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity are strictly prohibited. Unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. School board may, on its own initiative, request informational presentations on matters involving the Marion County School System. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. Please keep in mind for future meetings that speakers may use handouts or audiovisual presentations, but only if they're provided to the school board assistant at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. They must also have a total length of five minutes or less. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Any identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you for attention to the board's requirements, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ann, will you be able to use the timer up there?
Yes.
Okay.
I thank you for the opportunity to share tonight. My name is Bob King, K-I-N-G. Ms. Kelly and I are not related, we are not husband and wife, we are not brother and sister. So, but the last name is K-I-N-G King. I live at 5240 Northeast 3rd Street in Ocala, and I am here tonight to speak both as a parent and also as a supporter of the men and women who are instructors and leaders at their local junior officers' training corps at their local high school here in Marion County, of which you will hear a few of the gentlemen speak here in just a few moments. As a parent, I am proud to say that two of the names that appear on a list, I don't know if you will get those later on or not, but there's a list, the last time I was in this room was almost three years ago, when there was no seating, there was just a whole lot of teenagers standing up here, receiving close to $2 million in scholarships for different things, different schools, literally around the United States. But I'm also here to, as a parent, I'm proud to say that two of the names that appear on the letter and information that was shared, or will be shared with you by Lieutenant Commander Steve Davis, are two of my three children. The first is Kimberly King from the class of 2013. This past May, because of the training and teaching that she received from the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Program at Vanguard High School, Kimberly is now a graduate of the University of Memphis with honors. She also has a degree in public relations and journalism, and is now an ensign in the United States Navy, proudly serving the United States, and is currently stationed at Mayport Naval Base in Jacksonville, Florida. My son, whose name also appears on the list, is from the class of 2015. He is currently attending the University of Arizona on a Naval Reserve Officers Training Corps Scholarship. He is a midshipman 3rd class, and is also the commander of the University of Arizona, ROTC Color Guard, and the ROTC Drill Team. I'm also proud to say that I personally know each one of the scholarship recipients, with the exception of one from the class of 2009 that will appear on the sheet. And so I don't get in trouble when I get home. My youngest daughter, Emily King, is serving as the Public Affairs Officer at the Vanguard High School Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps. She currently has no plans to go into the military, but the training and leadership skills that she has and is learning will certainly carry on as she goes to college next year. The Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps is much more than just a class. It's much more than a credit, so you don't have to take physical education, or even advertisement for the military. In fact, I believe that less than 10% of the young men and young women who are in the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Program actually go to the military. For many of the students that are in the program, it's a place to belong, to be accepted, and even loved and encouraged. It is a place where they can feel safe, a place that teaches and shows them discipline, values, respect for others, and even respect for themselves. Many times, the lessons, lessons that they learn and qualities that are shown and instilled in them allows them to become leaders at school, in the community, and wherever their life may take them. For other students in the program, it gives them the opportunity... life may take them. For other students in the program, it gives them the opportunity to succeed at something and also receive recognition for their accomplishments. Programs like orienteering, where the students are taken to the woods, dropped off, and have to find their way back to certain meeting area with just a compass and a map. By the way, that isn't actually what happens, but it's close. If the students would like to do something a little bit more, he or she may join the air rifle team. This team practices very hard and they travel to other schools to compete for trophies and other rewards, while the student can receive medals and ribbons for their uniform. The field trips that they go on are more than just a fun time away from home, but an opportunity for students to see a little bit about what the Navy and the military has to offer them, as well as what the Navy and military life is all about. I know that when they go to the Naval Air Station in Pensacola, they eat in the chow hall, they wear their uniforms, and they also have the opportunity to see what goes on on a working naval base. When my oldest daughter, Kimberly, was commissioned this past May, the captain of the ROTC unit at the University of Memphis shared a great word of advice to those five new military officers. He said this, and I am paraphrasing.
Time.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I didn't see it. I didn't know what the signal was. Thought maybe you were pushing her out of the way or something. Sorry about that. Thank you very much.
Maurice Perrine.
Good evening, Amy White. Good evening. My name is Maurice Perrine. It's my first time being at something like this. I was born in St. Louis, Missouri. My mother and father were teenagers.
Name and address.
Oh, Maurice Quincy Perrine.
Fella, last name.
P-E-R-I-N-E. All right, I live at 3 Tim Tam Road, Ocala, Florida, in Meadowwood Farms. I was born in St. Louis, Missouri. My mother was 14 years old when she was pregnant with me. My father was 18 years old. I'm two teenagers, had nothing to do during the summer, and I'm not sure where I was conceived. At a football game, in a car, I don't know. I told my mother when I was older, "Thank you for not throwing me in a crash. Thank you for not aborting me." I currently work at Vanguard High School, and I'm very passionate about those students because when I look at them, I think about my mother and father. And I said, "I wish I could go back and talk with them." And if they had someone like me growing up, I probably wouldn't be here today because it would have got a lot of better advice and good direction during the summers. I'm currently married. I've been married for 22 years. My wife is Japanese. I married a lady from Tokyo. Boy, do we have challenges. My mother and fa, my mother and father-in-law said, "You don't know him," and there were three strikes against me. Well, I studied Japanese. I speak, read, and write Japanese. I have a fourth to fifth grade proficiency level. And I planned on living in Japan because it's a very peaceful country and I got to know myself. And by the way, the Japanese education system, they went to school even on Saturdays and through the summer up until a few years ago. Well, I don't encourage that because I think our American way of life is very important, but I do encourage summer programs and those students of Marion County having a, having a chance, especially for Vanguard demographics. It's a new word I just learned. Commander Davis would tell me, my coworker, "Senior Chief, don't have your heart broken, okay? You gotta consider what the children are going through. You have to love all of them." Because I had to remember what I, what I had to go through in life and what I've been through, but it takes time. You can't accomplish what needs to be accomplished during the school day because those students are stressed. They're studying for tests and they get their ROTC. They let their hair down. I hear stories about how, okay, a few years ago, there was a student mother that passed away violently. Actually, there was three or four students that came through Vanguard. And I heard the stories and I didn't ask. They felt a connection. And that's what's really important with students is a connection. And I guess what I want to say, the reason I'm here tonight is that I'll offer a unique opportunity for students along with Commander Davis and also the booster, the parents, that I think is very important for Vanguard High School. I had the opportunity to work at Central High School. The principal sat down with me and said, "I offer you an extra amount of money, 12-month contract. All the schools are on the same road. They had a cannon. They have 300 students, a beautiful program." But I chose Vanguard High School because I looked in the students' eyes and I saw an opportunity to make a connection. All right? And I saw the other students, they had everything that they needed. Likewise, Vanguard High School has a special need. The last instructor that worked there, he retired. He says, "Mo," he called me, "Mo, Mo," he says, "I'm not worried about the students that have opportunities. I care about and I'm worried about the ones that need that opportunity, that have, that don't have that chance." So, we're not very good at drill. Our uniforms look good, all right? And we do our best, but boy, do they smile and boy, do they enjoy eating together and going on trips to think about their lives and reflect. I grew up in the Peabody Projects of St. Louis, Missouri. I currently live in a two-acre home in Meadowwood Farms. I have very strong faith and I hope, I told my coworker, I tell people, "At least I die, if I fail, at least I fail trying." All right? And so that's my life. My son is currently a junior at UF. He's studying aeronautical engineering. And he's seeing where we're from. And the same training and talk that I have with him is what I'm giving to the students at Vanguard High School. My last duty station, I taught officer training in Newport, Rhode Island. The officers are gentlemen, and we have so much more to offer, but we don't, we need more time. Please consider offering an extra month of contract for my coworker. I can't do it myself. We need both of us there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for this opportunity. God bless you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Commander Stephen Davis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lieutenant Commander Steve Davis. My, my address is Vanguard High School, 7 Northwest 28th Street, Ocala, Florida, 34475 Davis, D-A-V-I-S. I have the pleasure of being the senior naval science instructor with Vanguard's NJROTC program. I work with Senior Chief Perrine, who is the naval science instructor. Together, we have over 43 years of Navy experience and 17 years as JROTC instructors. We love sharing our experience with our, with 164 cadets in our program. Together, we work very hard in building relationships with our cadets.
Got it, Dan.
Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. And help them mature into productive adults. I'm here to share with you the things that we do and plan to do during the summer break. Before I do, I want to explain that the Navy does not require us to do anything outside of normal school hours and normal school workdays, but they encourage us to do as much with the cadets as we can. We are given a lot of latitude to run our programs as we deem appropriate for our individual schools and the cadets enrolled in our programs. The Navy supports JROTC instructor contracts for periods of 300 to 360 days to give us the opportunity to do more with cadets. The summer break is the best time to take cadets on field trips to military bases, military training facilities, and museums, and to visit colleges so they are not missing school. These trips help to enlighten and enhance the cadets' understanding of opportunities through military service and also help them understand military history and sacrifice. Senior Chief Perrine is on an 11-month contract, and every summer, he instructs at the NJROTC Leadership Academy, which is hosted by Admiral Farragut Academy in St. Petersburg. There, there are two one-week sessions where 120 cadets from the 58 Navy JROTCs in our area come to learn more about being leaders, self-discipline, and managing their time. It's an intense boot camp-style environment that wraps up with a formal graduation ceremony that parents attend. Our area manager is always looking for additional instructors to support Leadership Academy. I have not assisted since I'm not on contract during this period. I do, however, go to the Navy in-service in Jacksonville every summer. It's only three days long, but it's mandatory that one of us attend. I could send Senior Chief, but he needs a break after Leadership Academy, and he has children at home that need time with their father. JROTC is a citizenship development program. I want to keep the cadets engaged during the summer. I've made field trips during spring break over the past eight years, but I'm stopping this practice as of this year and using the time off during spring break for family time, like most other educators do. Trips I intend to continue making in the summer include Naval Air Station Jacksonville, Naval Station Mayport, Naval Air Station Pensacola, the National Museum of Naval Aviation in Pensacola, Battleship Memorial Park in Mobile, Alabama, the Navy Dive School in Panama City, Florida, Patriots' Point in Charleston, South Carolina, and the Marine Corps Recruit Depot, Paris Island. The things that cadets can learn from visiting these places are too numerous to share during this forum. Colleges that have Navy ROTCs that I'd like to take them to visit include UF, USF, Embry-Riddle, and Jacksonville University. I want them to see the differences in the colleges and talk to the Navy ROTC units. Jacksonville University is unique in that it has the second-largest Navy ROTC in the nation. Midshipmen who are awarded a scholarship here not only receive the benefit of a standard Navy, Navy ROTC scholarship, but JU gives them a room and board scholarship as well. Very few colleges do that. There are many other things that we can do with cadets at the school as well during the summer. The Navy reimburses the school district for 50% of our salary for up to 360 days. An extended contract of 11 or 12 months for JROTC instructors costs the school district less than the cost of a first-year teacher. For this reason, I think all JROTC instructors should be offered an 11- or 12-month contract to enable us to take cadets' places and learn things that most high school students will never experience. I hope I've been able to give you a little better understanding of what we do and how we try to have a positive influence on our cadets. Thank you for your time this evening.
Major Brian Carlson.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Major Brian, Major Retired Brian Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N. I reside at 3001 Southwest 24th Avenue, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. I didn't come quite as prepared. I've been here about two months. I work at Dunell and High School. I am the brand-new Senior Aerospace Science Instructor at Dunell. I literally moved here a week before school started, so I have been, you know, trying to play catch-up since. So, but I appreciate Commander Davis kind of, you know, offering us to come to speak. So, one of the things that I've learned as being a new, new instructor is, is the many things that we do that you kind of don't think about. Being a teacher, you know, you stand in front of the classroom. I did have some prior teaching experience with the Air Force, so a lot of the classroom time that I had, I brought six years of teaching experience with me, teaching adults. Of course, children are a little different, but believe me, after, if you've taught adults before, they tend to act like kids, too. So, but anyway, so six years' teaching experience, 22 years' active-duty experience. So, we come with a lot of experience. What I've found, though, is the, the meat and potatoes, as I like to tell the kids, the meat and potatoes behind the program is the co-curriculars. That's what gets the kids involved and gets them excited, is being able to take them out and show them the things that are, that are relevant to them, right? We teach them and we teach them in the classroom. We can stand there and bore them with PowerPoint and we can talk to them about those things, but letting them touch them and experience them, though. So, we become more than just a teacher. We become a coach. We become a mentor. We become a parent. You know, they want to confide in us. And we use those tools to help engage the kids and to, to bring them in. So, in, in doing so, we spend a lot of times, we do some other things. We do, well, I sat down, so first off, co-curriculars. I sat down with my, with my cadets and I told them, I said, "These are the co-curriculars that I can offer you." And we came up with a list of 14 different co-curriculars. Now, if, if, if you've worked with the co-curriculars before, basically, I'm a coach of 14 different sports, right? We talked about marksmanship. So, marksmanship, we have to have, you know, someone out there each time with the kids to coach them on marksmanship. So, that's a lot of hours, a lot of time after hours for that, weekends to do marksmanship trips. But if they want to be involved in that, that takes extra time. Now, Dunell and High School, if you've been out there, sir, and I heard you speak of Dunell and High School, and it's, it's, it's a challenge to get the kids to come out there after school with, with transportation issues and having to get them out there. So, being able to do stuff on maybe weekends or, as we spoke of, during the summers. So, to be able to do these co-curriculars and keep the kids engaged in these co-curriculars, like drill team, color guard, those kinds of things, the time that is needed to take and show these kids that it is important to be dedicated to something takes more than just the, the time that we can give them during these, these class hours. So, if we're able to expand that during the, the summer months, it, it's, it would definitely be beneficial. So, given that opportunity to expand to an 11- or 12-month, is that option to be able to keep the kids engaged, I think is invaluable. You, the experience that we bring, like I said, myself, 22 years, six years of prior teaching, you know, all that, and, and basically for, for less than a, than a first-year teacher makes, I think is invaluable. So, thank you for your time.
Mr. James, I'd like to say something to him.
Okay. Brendan, Anne, do we have anybody else?
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
And to the board. I went and visited the heart of Florida Ranch of Insetra, where they have the children that are homeless, basically. And I was taking on a tour last week. It was a very long tour. We spent a lot, spent a long day there. And it was really interesting. There was this one little girl that her whole family's there. There's four children. And one, one of the brothers has gone through. They kind of go and come as their family. They've been at, they, they, they call themselves children of the system. They've been in foster care. They never know where they're going to be, but they like it there. And one of the little girls, she, they make, they, they're on level, behavior levels, and they're both on a level four. One sister gets to a five, which is really, really good. But, so they're, they're good little girls. And one of the girls, they're in middle, that she's in middle school right now in Marion County, and she said her dream is to be part of ROTC. And she wants to be on the Marine ROTC. And her goal is to go into the military. And she began telling me just the excitement that she had. And this is a child who has nothing. She is, she has nothing but the bed she sleeps on. And her dream, so simple. And, you know, I gave her a hug and I said, she goes, "Can you do whatever you can to get the programs as big as you can?" Because she said, "Some of us, that's all we have." And I said, "I'll do what I can." I didn't know you were coming tonight. It's just a complete coincidence that you're here. Because I just met her last week. I had no idea. But it was really like talking about the children in the middle who, she's not college-bound. She doesn't have those opportunities. And she's not on the bottom where there's boys' clubs and stuff, you know, there's activities. But the ROTC fits a lot of kids in the middle, the kids who really don't have a lot of things that, that they're doing. And so, thank you for coming. And, and I'd like to have some more conversations about this as we go along. Thank you. I do support you.
Ms. Ely, you have anything?
I just appreciate listening to all of you. And the military is very important to me. My dad is 99 years old. He's a World War II veteran. We just had a huge birthday party for him this weekend, but his whole life has been the Army. And I just think it's such an important part of everybody's life, you know? And I appreciate you sharing that with me. And I do support the ROTC programs and hope that we can, you know, beef it up some more for, for all of our kids. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other comments?
I just think I'll go in.
Good. I just want to remind the board that we do have a work session. I think, Ms. Oliver, you received some information that we will be discussing supplements, and we can add this to, to the, to that particular discussion that we have. I want to remind everybody that we have ROTCs in all of our schools, and we really, really need to look at the total program. Okay? And I understand what you heard today and I, and my heart go out to everybody that participates, but I want everybody to understand that we need to look at the total program and we'll have an opportunity to do that, our work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Did Commander Davis, Commander Davis, did you have a handout or something that you wanted to hand out? I knew you mentioned it, so.
It's got a little bit of information. Starts off with my script. Any details that you missed?
Thank you.
It's got the list of, I think, graduates from Vanguard who went on to ROTC or academies.
Pardon me. We need one for the record also, if you don't mind. Thank you very much.
Got Mr. King's two children listed on there, so he's very proud of that.
As he should be.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt a revised board policy 8.601, technology acceptable use? May I have a motion and a second?
Can I move?
Moved by Ms. Ely and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Moved by Ms. Ely, and second by Ms. Boynton. Mr. Superintendent?
This board policy has been revised to reflect the minor wording revisions and updates to statutory authority and laws implemented, as well as state Board of Education rule.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revised board policy? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item C 16.1, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, and Items C 13.4, C 13.5, C 13.6, C 14.1, and C 15.1, which have been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, and second by Ms. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of our Chief 3000 Differential Literacy Solution for teachers and students at North Marion High School? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Ms. Boynton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item, along with two other purchases.
Right, and their education programs. And as I've stated, I've been on the board four years now, and I've over and over asked for a compilation of how these programs are assisting, or where they're effective, or how they're working, and I haven't been able to get that, so I will just continue voting. I've decided we don't get any, I don't vote for any more programs until someone can tell me, show me something that's working, so.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 4-1.
4-1, I'm sorry, 4-1. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of Star Math and Reading for Renaissance Learning for Marion Regional Juvenile Detention Center? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I don't know whether Ms. Stacy wants to discuss.
That's like, call the question.
You call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 4-1. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of Top Score Writing Curriculum for Anthony Elementary? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Okay. Ms. Stacy, you pulled this item.
Call the question.
Call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve, oh, I'm sorry, the motion passed 4-1. May I have a motion to approve the K-12 Uniform Assessment Calendar for the school year 16-17? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
It was moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Ms. Boynton. Ms. King, you withdrew this item?
I did. I had a moment to look at the Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar for Marion County, and what I did, I, you know, was reading through it, and then I got to the very last page, and if you look on our calendar for six, it shows us the estimates of total testing time by grade level. So, I looked at what was our mandated statewide assessments, and then I looked at our district assessments, and then I looked at the total approximate times. And so, it occurred to me, I was like, just out of curiosity, let me see what other counties are doing. And I did just that. So, if you guys can just take a second, I want you to notice, not all of them are yet up yet, because I guess the statute is new, and it has to be up by, they would prefer by October 1st. But if you look at Alachua County, for example, look at kindergarten. When you look at the statewide and district assessments, you're looking at 100 minutes. Now, look over at Marion County, you're looking at 1,237 minutes of testing. Then, if you look to the next page, look at Seminole, kindergarten, 340 minutes. Marion County, 1,237 minutes. One more, Citrus County, our neighbor, 60 minutes. Marion County, 1,237 minutes. So, I looked at these, and this, it goes K through 12. You can see all the estimated minutes. If you look at just kindergarten alone, we're looking at about 20 hours, just strictly on testing. But I also want you to look at 7th grade, and 7th grade shows you 2,100 minutes, which would calculate to about 35 hours of just testing. And that's just what's mandated by the state and the county. That doesn't even have to do with the teacher maybe teaching in her classroom, his or her classroom, and then give their own assessment. I can look back, and I know everyone was sitting here, and I believe it was right before I took office, but do you remember the teacher that came in?
The wagon.
With the wagon, and she showed us, and we had that visual. And then, we also had Ms. Helen Hamel come before us. The teachers are begging us and telling us that we are over-testing, and we listened, but now we have data. And I just wanted to show you guys this, make you guys aware of this, and I wanted to explain why I will be voting no for approval of this calendar tonight, and I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Superintendent, you have someone here that want to talk?
I certainly do. I asked Mr. John McGowan to come up, our Director of Counseling and Assessment, and also Mrs. Donna Otzel, who's our K-12 Academic Services. They're the two folks that put this together, and as they're making their way up on board, I'll share with you that this reporting of assessments is, and the timing is brand-new this year. If you'll recall and look into our recent past, we used to get a state, a district calendar of assessments on one page. Didn't have any of the times on it at all. And this board has been very interested in the amount of time that we did spend on assessment. You know that at two different times over the past two years, our district team has reduced the number and the amount of tests that we have in Marion County, both that we require our teachers to do and those that the state does. This particular template, and Mr. McGowan and Ms. Otzel can go into greater detail if you need that, ask us to list all of the assessments. I cannot speak for the other counties, Mrs. King, that you point out. I do not know what they included in that. I will share with you that what this team did was to attempt to be extremely transparent and list everything that we do, from progress monitoring tools to the actual state assessments. And I think this is a completely accurate reflection of what is needed here as far as assessment is concerned. And to finally point out, and I'll let, I'll get quiet in just a minute and let these folks address any other questions you have, Mrs. King has already pointed out that she's done the math. You take those minutes and divide by 16, you get the actual number of hours. And if you look at kindergarten, that's about 40 minutes a week, if you look at that with 36 weeks of school. That's one hour a week if you look at 7th grade. So, I think the numbers are, again, we're attempting to do everything we can to be as transparent as we can for you and for the state, and at this time, I'll let Mr. McGowan, if he wants to address anything else here, and then entertain any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Superintendent Tomlin, Chairman James, board members. Good evening. I just want to address the Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar, as Ms. King mentioned, is new. In statute, it is due as a board-approved document and posted on our district website, and actually every school website as well, by October 1st. And what it asks to populate is not only state assessment information, but also district information. This template that you see is directly from the Department of Education, and a lot of these state assessments were pre-populated. We had to make some minor adjustments on, when we received it, in terms of our district testing windows and things of that nature, but I did work with Ms. Otzel to populate the local district assessments, and then, as you see, as was referenced in Section 6, the total minutes are added up. And I will say, just reiterate what Mr. Tomlin mentioned, we, obviously, any assessment, and I believe that these assessments for the district, on the district side, were already kind of being composed by some of the program specialists in K-12, so we used that information, and we were as transparent as possible to list every single assessment that's given, large and small, from the, you know, math fluency check to the FSA. Everything is listed on here. The only other calendar that I've had a chance to see is Alachua County. The only thing that I mentioned right off, or that I noticed right offhand was for elementary. They had one assessment listed for kindergarten first and second, and that was a year-ending, end-of-grade assessment. So, I noticed right away that they did not list anything with progress monitoring, which the state required. They didn't list what assessment or how long that assessment takes for those grade levels. And we did in every grade, K through 12. So, we were, you know, trying to attempt to be as transparent as possible. That's why the length of the document and also the total minutes. I will just point out that the total minutes you'll see on the last page in the last column, as was referenced, even our highest grade level, which would be 7th grade at 2,100 minutes, equates out to about 3.9% of a student's time in testing. The state requires 5% or less of their time to be spent in testing. The highest grade level we have is at 3.9%, which was 35 hours a year, which is about one hour or less a week. And again, that's just using 7th grade as the highest assessed grade level. So, my answer, any questions you might have?
Okay, if I'm looking over here on Citrus County, and it's talking about, were you talking about Citrus that didn't include what they were supposed to have?
Alachua.
Okay, on district assessments, you said that, you know, of course, that we can't have more than 1.5%, but I flipped over to the back, since she just happened to include Citrus, and I see 1%, 1%, 2%, 2%, 3%, you know, at different grade levels. You know, it kind of goes up at different grade levels. It looks like 9th grade, it starts to kind of level off, kind of where we're at on some of it, but less in other areas. And Citrus County's ranked probably like 15th in the state or 16th in the state down the road, and this is the amount of testing time that they've got, and they're a very highly-ranked district. So, maybe we should possibly see what, and I've been preaching that, see what some of the high-ranking districts are doing to compare ourselves to, because it looks like those students are getting more instructional time and less testing time down the road. I think their border touches our border along the way, and would be very easy to make some context there, just to see what the difference is in this timing before we approve this, because I don't think the students are all that different there than they are here.
Well, again, I haven't had an opportunity to view that, but I can also say I can't speak for the other districts. I'm not sure what they did or did not include. We went according to the letter of the statute and including every single thing as it instructed us to, district and state assessment that we give, so that's what we listed. Again, the only one I've seen is Alachua, and from what I saw, that was not the case. But again, I haven't had an opportunity to view the other districts, so I'm not sure, and I can't speak for them, what they did or did not include. So, their totals and their total testing time and percentages, you know, again, I can't, I can't speak to.
Ms. Ely?
You had just mentioned you're following the letter of the statute. What if these other counties are not? I mean, is this just, is this, is this just a first draft of all of these? I mean, are the other districts going to have to make some changes?
Well, I-
If we're doing it right and they're not?
Well, what the statute says is that it has to be board-approved and posted to the district website by October 1st of each school year.
Right, right.
Starting this year, it'll be annual, and we have to send a link of that on our website to Tallahassee. From, you know, with what they do with it from there, I'm not sure, but we-
When they look at our number of minutes of testing time compared to other counties, what is, what is Tallahassee going to say or do, or?
I'm not sure. They have-
You can only speculate there. I would imagine that the one thing that the state would be looking for is certainly that no, no district exceeds the legislated 5% rule. I believe that's certainly one thing they would be looking for. And then, of course, it gives districts the opportunity to compare. Mr. McGowan meets with other district counseling and assessment specialists all across the state. Our K-12 Academic Services interacts with our neighboring counties in many, many ways as they develop testing calendars and testing protocol. Also, we are not doing this in isolation. And again, I'll emphasize that we are doing this in strict transparency, so you can see, and our community can see everything.
I have one more question for you. Is, are these the same tests that we administered last year, the same amount of time? If you go back?
That I'm not sure of, as far as the district's-
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman James and board members, Superintendent. I can try to answer that question. We've actually got a few less assessments than we had last year, but overall, they're very similar to what we've had in place. We've tried to reduce a little bit every year. Some of the grade levels, for example, in elementary mathematics, instead of doing unit, at the end of each unit, six or seven units, having, example, a learning check in mathematics, we give the, we, they, by teacher input, we move to more of a quarterly type thing. So, they're only doing one assessment along the way to kind of measure across the district, how are the kids progressing towards those standards to see if they're ready for the FSA, which they're going to be expected to-
What grade levels are those?
Well, we know we did that in 3 through 5. I know for sure, elementary mathematics. We've done a lot of that moving in that direction, like, two or three years ago in our high school and in middle school. Just in the state-tested areas is where we're talking, 3rd through 5th, mostly in our middle, 3rd through 8th, of course, mathematics are the main ones that we focus on. And then, Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II now are, of course, end-of-course exams.
Right.
So, we want to have something for teachers to be able to see how their kids are performing along the way to make sure they're ready for the end-of-course assessments. That's our hope, is to give them those tools.
Thank you.
I see one more similarity here about something. I'm looking at Citrus again, and when we get up to 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, it looks like they are including everything, at least at that level, because we're not so far off on those grades. It's the-
Elementary.
The elementary that we're really, really, really way off.
You really need to see the entire plan. As you can see, that the Marion County plan that was included in your document does list all of the assessments. I do not know what the other, Mrs. King copied the latter page.
I do have, I pulled it up real quick, and just looking at kindergarten, their reading/writing assessment, is that, do they, does the teacher read that verbatim? Like, is it still scripted? Because when I was teaching, the, when we gave our writing, our writing assignments, I can't recall what they're called. We had to read, like, okay, you'll have 60 minutes, whatever. Is it the same? Will the teacher reads it?
They've adapted those a little bit more to be like FSA. So, there's a, the kids do some reading and then some writing, and they do have a kind of a period, like a 50-minute period roughly to do that, but they have adapted them a little bit as we've transitioned to the FSA. I know you're referencing the old demand writings.
Demand writing, that's what it was. I couldn't recall. Okay, because I'm looking- Okay, because I'm looking for, at kindergarten, at the ELA writing assessment, which is going to be next week. Oops, excuse me, I'm first grade, but even still for first grade, it's sixty minutes. So first graders in October are sitting down and taking a sixty-minute test. And let me look, it may even have been kindergarten. I somehow skipped to... Let me look at the, sorry. Again, with kindergarten, starting in November, these students will be taking forty-five-minute tests. Their writing, their reading/writing assessment, which will also be next week, they're taking a sixty-minute test, and they're five and six years old. And, you know, and I'm not going to approve this. I'm sorry.
I also want to let you know that when I put those times on there, I put the absolute maximum. I, when I talk to Ms. Maxwell, who is our elementary program specialist for ELA, very few kids take sixty minutes. But again, I didn't want a teacher to look at this and say, well, we're allowed to have sixty minutes. Why didn't you put that amount? So I told, when we got with all the program specialists, and I asked them to help me collect this information. I said, I want the maximum. And I also know, for example, if you look at the number fluency checks, some of those only take a couple of minutes. But I said, well, what is the maximum? I put, if it was ten minutes, I put ten minutes. But if you remember, some of those kids can go through and do those facts in just a few minutes. Another thing that we added, and when I get an opportunity, we have our state meeting coming up in October, I'm going to find out from Citrus, I'm going to make a point, and Alachua, and say, what, where is your progress monitoring pieces that are required by the state? Because I put every single one in every grade level with all the times. But I looked at Alachua, and they did not. I know they do progress monitoring, because I have friends and relatives in Alachua County. So I don't, I'm not saying, I can't say what Alachua did, I can't say what Citrus did. But I want you to know that we wanted, particularly because we've had teachers say to you as a board, we have a lot of testing. So over the last three or four years, we, under Mr. Tomlin's direction, we've tried very hard to whittle down, whittle down, whittle down, and still leave those tools there so that we have something to measure. You've talked about seventh grade with civics. You've seen, that's one of our high ones. Well, one of the reasons for that is, remember, we are the, we were the, like, one of the bottom in seventh-grade civics EOC in our data. So we are trying really hard over the last few years to give some tools for teachers to see how their kids are progressing, and this year, finally, we saw a bump in that, in the scores for seventh grade. So I don't say, think I have all the answers for sure, but we feel like we've got to provide something in terms of tools. And if we can keep giving people the option to use those tools and to have something to measure their kids against, so that we have data to look at, to be able to see, where are we going? Are we on the right track? We don't want to wait until April and May and find out, our kids weren't ready. So that's part of the logic here. But I am going to, I promise you, when I go to my meeting in October, I do want to find out what Citrus and Alachua added or did not add, and maybe I can take some lessons from that. Maybe I shouldn't have put all these things on here. Well, also Seminole. Seminole is a district ranked number ten in the state, and they pretty well match the district assessments, at least at elementary, with Citrus. You know, within, within, like, a little bit, like, fourth grade's two-seventy at one and fourth grade's two-seventy at the other. I mean, I, you know, they're almost identical. Sixth grade is five-forty at Citrus, and three-thirty, I mean, at Seminole and three-thirty at Citrus. So they're real close, and then we jump way up to like fourteen-hundred, you know, minutes. So we've got two districts here that are in your top-performing districts, within the top fifteen districts in the state, two of them, that have real similar numbers. And our numbers are way off. So maybe we've included stuff we didn't have to include, possibly, which could be. So I really don't want to approve it like this, because I don't want to scare the community to death if they see this. And maybe if you would, you know, maybe we could do like an emergency item or something, Mr. Tomlin, and like, bring it back real quick, since you are on the timeline or something, or...
I mean, we certainly can, but again, I mean, we're directed to put everything, every assessment that we give, and these are the assessments that we give. Again, we can't speak for other districts if they did not, but...
And that's what I'm curious. Are other, are we over-testing? Are we testing so much in the districts that are performing decently, are they not? You know? And that's, that's what it boils down to. It's not that I'm questioning your data on here at all, and I appreciate you being transparent. But what is alarming to me is that we stood out compared to other counties, that we, on paper, it looks like we're over-testing. And we've also had teachers come in and say, we're over-testing. And I know, and I think, Ms. Ely, you should know also, any kindergartner taking a sixty-minute test, and the flip side of that is, you say, every student may not need that. But what if you have the teacher that reads that and makes the student sit, because the county is telling her that she has to have that student sit for sixty minutes for these tests? Does that make sense? I mean, there's a lot that could go on and happening here, so...
I want to add, I wanted to add something too. I don't think we're comparing apples to apples when we look at Marion County and, you know, and Citrus and Alachua. But if our teachers see this, they're, they're going to be in an uproar. So there's, there's got to be some kind of change. Either we need to reduce some of this testing time, take it off, and still put the required progress monitoring, everything in, or this is, this doesn't look good. And I think our teachers and our kids deserve to have the equal testing from other counties. And it might be, I think you're right, Donna, it might be, but we're including everything, like you said, and they're not. But this, if this is on, if this assessment calendar is on the website, you know, it's for everybody to see.
Especially now that we've talked about it in the school board, I mean, the teachers are going to be on it, like, why don't I?
We're breaking up a little bit. Ms. Martin, you have the floor.
For this level on K, what are you looking for, for K right now? Just, what are you taking, just K right now?
For, for kindergarten?
What, what assessments are they taking?
How many minutes right now for level K right now?
We've got it in here.
And what do you assess?
The, the total time is one thousand two hundred thirty-seven minutes, and I believe that was, what, just two and a, two point three nine hours? He did, Matt John did the math for the hours.
Two point three percent.
Of two point three percent, I'm sorry.
That's all you're doing?
Twenty hours.
Understood that, okay, so...
But that is mandated from the district. That's not what the teacher's doing in her classroom. This is the county saying, on, during this week, you will need to give a writing lesson, I mean, not a writing lesson, a writing assignment, sixty minutes. So it's, the teacher will give her, his or her test, the county gives test, and the state will also mandate test. So that's why that says state in that.
What, I guess I'd ask you, we've, we've talked about this issue a great deal. Do you want to just take a pencil and line through what you don't want our assessment to be? You have to, you have to give us a little more guidance as far as, as a team here. We are, we are recommending following the state template to the letter of the law. We're being transparent as we can, and we have twenty hours of testing for, for our kindergarten. We have thirty-five hours for the entire year of assessment. Does it look like it's more than the districts that Mrs. King has shared with us? Yes, it does, but I cannot speak, as Mr. McGowan has said, I don't have any idea. I know that they are required to progress monitor. Our learning checks are progress monitoring. Our fluency things are a way we progress monitor. And progress monitor means that we are assessing students along the way, just as teachers have always done. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. McGowan, then I'm going to try and bring this thing.
I just wanted to say, from the teacher point of view, I certainly understand where you're coming from if they were to see this. And my hope would be that a kindergartner, first grader, second grader teacher has seen all of these assessments. When they look on here, it will verify what they're doing in the classroom. And I think the opposite would be true if we take some of those things off, and then they look at this and say, well, I'm doing a lot more than what is being indicated. And that's why every single thing was listed, in an attempt to be as transparent as possible.
Okay, let's look at the timeframe that we're working on. When do we have to have this up?
October first.
Okay, whoa.
But what if we don't? But what if we don't?
Yeah, I've, DOE has made it clear, due to the scheduling of school board meetings, that if it cannot be approved by the first of October, to notify them. And I've already done that, because I know that our board meeting tonight was so close to the deadline. It's a simple notification to them, if it's over that date.
Okay, well, let's notify them, and, and let's take a few minutes, let's table this. And let's go ahead. Would you just review some of the counties that she has talked about and just bring it back? And it may come back the same way. Yeah, it will come back, may come back the same way.
The other counties may need to add the assessments that they didn't put in initially.
Do we have to vote to table?
May I have some clarification, and, Mr. James, I appreciate that suggestion, on exactly what you want us to do? Do you want us to look at the number of minutes? Do you want us to look at other districts? Do you want us to look at whether we should list progress monitoring? I think our, the folks that spend a lot of time on this need a little more direction from the board before we just close out here. Your, your preference, please.
I would ask you to have a conversation with Citrus and Seminole, since we have those two, just to see what we're, what, if we've included stuff that they haven't included, and why. Just two phone calls.
Okay, that's good. Anybody, any other? Anyone else?
Yeah, that looks good.
Go ahead.
I also want to inquire also, when you contact these counties, just to see if they have all the learning checks. I mean, progress monitoring, I can understand that, but I'm curious about the learning checks and all the writing assessments. Like, I want to, I want to know what the counties that are performing well, I want to know what they're doing, pretty much, you know? And so that's what I'm looking for. It's not your data that I'm, I'm disagreeing with here. What I'm questioning is how much are our students being tested? They need instruction, so, all right.
And since it's new, I'm sure, I mean, there just could be, just, everybody may be just recording something different, so...
The only, the only other assessment director that I've spoken with is from Alachua County. We were discussing something else, but this came up, and I do remember him telling me that, because this had just come out by state board. And he did mention that he wasn't going to list every single thing. He was going to group them together. Now, he didn't go into more detail of that, and, and again, I don't know if he was talking about fluency checks or writing assessments or what, but he said he did not want to list every single thing that he would group them together. So I could get more clarification there, too.
All right, may I have?
Go ahead.
Did you have something to say?
No.
All right, may I have a motion to table the Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar?
Okay. Miss Stacy, Ms. King has made a motion to table.
We're supposed to have, we should have a date certain that we're going to bring it back?
Yep, we will do that. Ms. King brought a motion to table it, and was Ms. King, oh, no, Ms. Stacy, seconded it. Okay, before we vote on it, let's look at a date in which we can bring this back. Is there, what's our next work session? Next work session is the sixth, which is next Thursday. The next board meeting after that is the eleventh. I'm not sure how much time our resident expert is not here today as far as, and certainly, we can have it by the, by the twenty-fifth to you. I can bring information to you, board, if Mr. McGowan has an opportunity, and I can bring it to our administrative briefing next Thursday, but I'm not sure that we can get it on the, the calendar. By the eleventh?
But that, do you think that gives you enough time to really thoroughly get in touch with the counties and get the information we're asking for?
On the eleventh?
It would be this, is that part of it?
Eleventh is our next board meeting. We'll certainly have it by the twenty-fifth, and Mr. McGowan can communicate with the state that if we can't get it on the eleventh, we'll have it on the twenty-fifth. And we'll, we'll do what we can, and we'll have a better definition of how long we have to advertise this for either the eleventh or the twenty-fifth. Okay, let's, let's... So...
If you've notified the DOE that we're not going to meet the ten-one deadline, we can have any date after that?
They didn't specify. They just said to notify them if it would not be published on the website by the first.
But they didn't say anything about it, any other drop-dead date after that?
No, they did not.
Let's do date certain of twenty-fifth. I'm certain we can make it by then. Date certain, board, twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth.
Okay, I have a motion on the, on the floor, all in favor? And you want me to just, we do it verbally?
We're just going to go.
We're fine, we'll write it later.
We're to table until...
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay.
Yes, ma'am, table's October twenty-fifth.
Okay, and you have a five...
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Ms. Otzel?
Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the master?
Wait a second, we need to make sure we got it in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't think we were voting on that.
We're voting to table.
Right, I thought we...
Okay, now we can go.
Show it to us. Okay. Okay, we'll just, it's five zero. May I have a motion to approve the Master in Service Educational Training Plan for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen? May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Ely? And seconded by Ms. Boynton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item?
Yes, I did. Of course, I wouldn't, the book wasn't included for obvious reasons. It's really a large book, and so it wasn't something that I requested to look at. But I was curious about one thing, considering the fact that we report to have had these new goals and a five-year plan, and we're working on these things. I noticed right on the part that everybody can see that looks at our agenda, I didn't have to click anything, I didn't have to go into anything, under effective action, staff and leadership have worked jointly to review the plan, and they only recommend updating the cover of this. This booklet has no changes from the two thousand fifteen, sixteen plan. This is training through use of the plan. This will assist in creating well-trained, knowledgeable staff to work in students, with students and parents. Considering the fact that we are, some of the board members have asked for us to do everything we can to get into a different track, this, I mean, we could have put the phone book in between these pages, and maybe the DOE doesn't even look at it. Maybe it's not a significant book. We could have just put the phone book and covered the, fixed the cover and not even had anything inside of it. If it's, but if it's truly to help us improve the district, I don't understand why we just put everything identical to the same.
Okay. Mrs. Superintendent?
No changes, okay.
Tara Hart is, works as a professional development specialist, Director of Professional Development in K-12 Academic Services. I've asked her to be here tonight to, to address some concerns you have. I'm sure she'll start with Mrs. Stacy's concern here. Ms. Hart?
Good evening. I apologize for my voice. I've been fighting something. The MIP book really just is a state requirement, and I have a copy of the statute to which it, we are doing what is required by statute. The only purpose for this book is to report categories of training. So each, we have component numbers in the state of Florida. Each component number has three parts. The first part of the component number tells the state what subject area the training is in. For example, English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, et cetera. Then the middle three numbers in the component number indicate a more focused area. So let's say, behavior management for English Language Arts, et cetera. And then the third number is just a numerical sequence. So every district builds its own MIP components based on those guidelines. And then we report training categories to the state every year on three surveys during three survey periods. And so that's the only purpose of this book, and all it does is give us components that we then categorize each of our trainings in. So in any given year, we could have four hundred trainings in eighteen different components, or we could have twelve trainings in one component. So what we're actually doing with professional development in terms of courses is not reflected in this book. That's not the purpose of the book.
Okay, so how long have they required this book? Is this something?
Years and years. I have your approvals, school board approvals, going back as far as oh-eight, oh-nine. So every time it's been on an agenda is in here, and it has been a state requirement. I can give you the Board of Education rule and the section of the Florida statute.
That's what I'm saying, it's another one of those things, I mean, we have to do it, I guess. I just want to know...
Yeah, it's very, very...
If it's not a useful tool, I mean, I will vote for it, I just couldn't understand why, you know?
It's a legis...
Changes and stuff, but we're doing the same thing we did last year.
No, it's a legislative mandate. It's something that we have to do, it's in the law, and we have to report it, and we have to have a letter by October first. That's why we're here, October first is important, apparently, up there. And it is so that we can report data to the state and that... And it is so that we can report data to the state, and that's as simple as it gets.
So it's just something to entertain the state?
It is a way for them to measure what areas we are doing professional development in by district, so they have it for all 67 districts.
And have we just, every year, just redid the cover?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. No, we actually, you should have a hard copy of it, so when you said that you don't have it.
It's in the boardroom.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, you do have a hard copy. It's also on our website, if you go to K-12 Academic Services Professional Development, there's a link on the left that says MIP book. And you can download the whole thing in PDF, I have it saved on my desktop, cause I use it a lot.
But how many, how many years have we done it without changing it?
Oh, no, no, ma'am. We went through a major revision when we rolled out new standards. Almost every time we roll out a big change, we have to update our book. We tend to look at lots of other districts like St. John's and Seminole and Sarasota. We try to, I meet with professional developer coordinators across the state, and we talk about what, what we're doing with our components. And then the state passed a new MIP template about two years ago, so that's the last time we really did a big overhaul to the book. But at this point, in terms of the categories of training that we're offering, we have, we have lots and lots of components to cover all those.
So then it's just routine for other districts also, just to?
Yes, in fact, most districts.
Cover, just redo, and until, unless you have, like you said, an overhaul of standards.
Yes, right.
And you go along and approve the same book, okay.
That's right, so if we were to adopt new science standards, we would need to do a whole new science section here.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, many districts do a five-year approval from their board, which I was like, how do you get away with that? Cause it says annual in the statute, but they do it. I actually have samples of letters from other districts where they get a five-year board approval.
Yeah, and then if the standards change, they have to go in and address that.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion, Board? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion pass, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the, the donation as submitted? $1,817 to Hammont Bourne Junior Elementary School from O'Kella West United Methodist. $19,600 to Maplewood Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for the Duke Energy STEM Grant. $1,000 to the Marion County Public School System Social Works Service Department from O'Kella New Logical Center. $8,000 to the Marion County Public Schools Social Work Department from the O'Kella Outreach Foundation Feed the Need. $10,000 to the Marion Technical College from the Public Education Foundation for the Grant for Great Ideas Project Pathway to Prosperity. $7,500 to Marion Technical Institute from the Marion Regional Manufacturers Association. $2,500 to South O'Kella Elementary School from their business partner Triple Crown Trailer via the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Big D Service. May I have a motion in a second?
Send move.
Send move by Mrs. Ely. Second by Ms. Boynton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion pass, five zero. Ms. Stacy, will you thank our? Somebody voted nay?
Oh, you.
I voted nay. Okay, thank you for reminding me, guys.
Would you like me to change it?
Would you change that?
He's not little, we need to make that.
Yeah, we need to make that thing over to the side a little bit.
She took her complaints.
Okay, that's why I complained.
Her corrections.
Okay, the motion pass, five zero. Okay, now, we'll let, we'll let that one go this time.
Did you want Ms. Stacy to?
Yeah, Ms. Stacy.
I would like to thank the community. We've had the foundation here tonight talking to us about all the things that the business partners and the, and the different people do, and the, Engage in Education, and all the volunteers, and the money that's attached to it. Some people volunteer, and some people put their money behind it, some people put their time behind it. And my colleague here to my left, she is our Board Secretary for adding up the columns, and we had a $51,000 worth of donations. Did I read it right, I don't have my glasses on?
Fifty-four hundred seventeen, fifty-one thousand four hundred seventeen.
Yep, she's got it right. And that is a lot of money for the schools to be able to do special little things, because sometimes the little things that they wanna do at the school doesn't take a lot of money, but it takes some money. And I know we all get called sometimes, and sometimes somebody's got a homeless child and they just need $200. That might not be a, that might not seem like a lot to us, but it's a lot to that child that needs the help. And so, to, for these schools, $51,000 is a lot of money to me, and it's a tremendous amount to these students who are using the money in their classrooms. And I wanna thank the community for their generosity. Thank you so much.
Okay. Meeting and reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 6, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to receive a presentation on the Thelma Parker Kitchen MTT-S Multi-tiered System of Support Pilot Program. A pilot program is Silver River Museum and a new job classification description for peer counselors. So please note that it's October 6, 2016, 9:00 a.m. Okay, we will start with. Ms. Ely.
Okay, I wanted to remind parents, we have early dismissal tomorrow, and I do appreciate so many of the schools have that out on your marquee in front, for parents who are driving by, or anybody who is related to children in that school, but it is early dismissal, so it's two hours early. And I also wanted to share with parents and community members, if you wanna get involved and get interested in the school that you're driving by each day, even if you're not a parent or grandparent, please join the SAC, the School Advisory Council, or even just go to one of the meetings. You can gain a lot of information about the school, what they're doing, and how you can, how you can become involved. And like I said, you don't have to join school, the school council, but you, if you just come to one meeting or two meetings, they meet four times a year, some meet more. But the SAC is, is a real valuable piece of the school, and it's the, it really, it's, it's the backbone of the school. We find out what's going on, and if you wanna know a little bit more, other than what your child brings home to tell you, please go to the SAC meetings, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Boynton?
Okay, I'm just gonna use this a little, okay? Thank you. Well, thank you again to everybody, thank you.
Will for be county by Kelly King.
Thank you. Sorry about it, yeah, I'm gonna try, try it again, I will try again, again, thank you, and again, I see you, I see you all again. I was with the Florida School Board Association for the School Board, uh, uh, for, again, for training this time, and, um, sometimes I get really kinda like funny to, to some of y'all, because you know, I, I am talking the words a little much better, you know? But sometimes I feel like really funny, because I'm like, okay, wait a minute, can the words come really, really good, you know, really much better? Yes, I can, but then I get really very hurt, really sad again, funny. Like when I saw Mrs. Lee, Steven, he made funny at it, and I'm like, ooh, I'm so embarrassed, you know? So sometimes, so I said, let me start this again, because when somebody make funny at you, make funny, so I'll start this again, cause the words kinda make you funny again. So I'm gonna start this again, okay, hold on, let me start this again.
Thank you, get see you again. I was with the Florida School Board Association Board of Director Leadership Development Training and Meeting. And Legislature Session will for be county by Kelly King.
And?
And Legislature Session will for be county by Kelly King.
With Kelly King, she's on our session for that, sometimes I hear a little bit. And Mr. Bobby, you wanna talk about something, really?
Let me clean up and come back to you, okay?
Alright.
Ms. King?
Okay, um, well, as I like to say, account, attendance counts. Mr. Vanello back there is like, yep. I know most of us have received this, but Mr. Lane sent us some information on how our schools are doing with attendance, but he also had a quote in there. And it says, did you know that when students improve their attendance rates, they improve their academic performance and their chance of graduating? So again, I would like to encourage parents and students to make sure that if it's at all possible that you're in school, in class, every day, all the way. All day, all the way. I have Mr. Christian over there correcting me, thank you. So I just wanted to begin with that, but I also wanna discuss some concerns that I have. I'm concerned about some decisions that have taken place this week, and it involves a principal at Sunrise. He was removed from the school. And because of that, there is a little, there's some chain of events that are taking place. For example, the principal that is now at Saddlewood will be going to Sunrise. The assistant principal that is at Ward Highlands will be going to Saddlewood, and then there's a coordinator that will be moved. That's three schools that have disruption this year, and we're already, you know, the end of September and October. And with that, and I, and I've heard some rumblings and things, you know, going on, so it's, it's a concern of this community. And there's also been the question that's been brought up about the principals that are on assignment. And they have a valid point, and I started thinking, and, and we know that we have some principals on assignment, and I, I have a few questions. I don't know if we need to have a work session, so we can get the who, what, why, where, and when's, you know, when's, what's happening with these principals on assignment? Maybe could it be a recommendation that a solid, seasoned principal that is, you know, up in the county office? You know, there's also been the recommendation, maybe someone like that should go into Horizon, because Horizon, as we all know, is a struggling school. And the thought. Or Sunrise, ooh, Sunrise, sorry. But we know it's a struggling school, but in the meantime, when we're trying to help the struggling school, we're also affecting other schools with the disruption. And Ms. Ely, you probably would know that best, you know, a principal leaving schools and coming and going and, and the rapport at this point, so, those are my concerns, that's what I've been hearing, and I'm just relaying that information. I also would like to, and, and I know this is a sensitive topic and discussion, but we have a new superintendent that will be taking office in November. And I would hope that our superintendents will be working together during this important transitional time, because we're gonna have new leadership in with ways that she may wanna go, and, you know, I just hope that we're making wise choices, and that we always remind ourselves and do what is right and best by our students. And I'm gonna leave it at that.
James, I'd like to comment to something she said.
Okay, it'll be your turn, and when she finish?
I'm, I'm finished, I'm good.
And something also, Mrs. King, that I don't know if you're aware of, I'm, I happen to be aware of, but just cause I have a friend whose, whose child goes to Saddlewood. But they have a, their assistant principal there has only been there like half a year. So we're pulling the substantial administration out of that school. Their, because their old AP went somewhere else, and that, was it Emerald Shores, I believe? And so, they have an AP that's really only been there for half a year, and now they're getting a new principal in, who also was an AP coming in, so there's no seasoned principal coming into that school. And that's concerning to me, because that's a large school. And I know a couple, some of the parents got together and, and called me about it, and they just love the stability of their school. And so, the lack of experience, the leadership part of there is a concern to those parents, and so, and that's not what my concerns were tonight, I don't really have any concerns, but that was my concern. I was gonna mention, I didn't know you were gonna talk about it, that's what the beauty of us being able to talk here, because we can't talk any other way. So, I didn't know if you knew that about, the AP is also very inexperienced at Saddlewood. But I did talk a little bit about what I was gonna talk about, which is the Heart of Florida Ranch, up in Citra, and how wonderful that place was. But I've already talked about it, so I won't, I won't go back, but it sits on like 60 acres, they've got some horses for the kids, and it's really, really, there's some really nice things that's going on here that, so I'll be going out and mentoring with some of the children there, and who knows? I may be an old lady adopting more children, I don't know, but there's some out there for adoption, and I'm getting really interested in it, so.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Lake?
I'm okay, thanks.
Mrs. Superintendent?
I have two things, Board, just to remind you that tomorrow, September 28th, is Dads Take Your Child to School Day. This is a state initiative, and many of our schools, particularly elementary schools, have activities and planned greetings for fathers, and significant male figures that are encouraged to take their children to school on this, tomorrow. Also, next Wednesday is another special occasion sponsored by the state, that's Walk Our Children to School Day. And not many of our children do walk to school anymore, but this year's festivities will be at Legacy Elementary School. A gathering at seven o'clock, or really, a little before then, if you can get there. Law enforcement and other community agencies will be at that event, and it's a very good way to, to encourage safe walking or bike riding to school for our students. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. I know that the superintendent at some point will let you, will bring us some information on, on the move that he made, I know he will do that, cause I've talked with him. But, something that's very important. And I have to look at Angie Boynton and really smile to her, and I would like to commend her for completing the Certified Board, Certified School Board Program. The certified, she is a Certified School Board Member, and she should be receiving her award down in Tampa. And for the people that don't know, if you look at the courses that she has taken and completed, all of the courses that is required to be a Certified Board Member. And it totaled out to be 116 points per se, and she started in 2010, and she's completing it in 2015. So the Certified Teacher Board Program is a very rigorous program, and I just think we need to give her a round of applause for a job well done. Ms. King?
Yes?
I will challenge you to follow.
I'm close.
She's close. Some other things that I need to just make you aware of now. I'll be getting some information back, back from Ms. Segal in reference to the investigation that she's running, in reference to our, that the complaint was made about our, our graduation rate, so we'll be getting some information back to you. Hopefully, I will get some, something to an update, I know she needed to interview some people that's here, and I'm hoping that I will, I will get that information. I will have a transental meeting, a transgender meeting, just to look at what we, we've talked about in the, in the, in the subcommittee, and bring that information back to you guys in terms of what we, what they came up with, in terms of how all of us can be made aware of what is occurring in terms of dealing with transgender issues, so that's, that's, that's a done deal. I would like to take this time to really, uh, bring our attention to the fact that we do have middle school athletic program, and they are really. bring our attention to the fact that we do have middle school athletic program and they are really doing well out there. I talked with Jody Phillips today and Jody gave me the indication that it is being well received and the kids are really participating in those programs. So that was something that we needed to, to really look at. And another thing, board members, if you're into football, you have to look at, it was a little article in the, in the newspaper today in reference to the fact that the districting for high school football will change. So it will go where the, the small districts will have, will can compete against the larger district. And they're hoping that will bring some equity in terms of who make the playoffs and things of that nature. So that was one of the little key things that I'd like to bring to your attention. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to, Angie, do you want to say something?
Thank you though.
Congratulations, okay. Before addressing expulsion matter, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received an alternative placement list for students through the September 19, 2016. And are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-17-02 and JD-1-03E with Educational Services through the 2016-2017 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Ms. King. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm not real sure what I just did, not present. Something wrong?
Okay, could you all vote again, please?
The motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Ms. King. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Ely?
Oh, I'm sorry, just.
The motion passed five zero, meeting is adjourned.